To, these folks are here.
These folks are here.
Yeah.
Eric.
Eric and Julie.
Julie.
Peters. Yeah, so they work on the columns on Second Street.
You guys have done a fantastic job. I, I was here to get just the other, uh, couple of weeks ago for Jenny Fools going away. It, it's fantastic.
Thank you.
You guys did a great job. It was very enjoyable.
Go first.
One, two.
There you go.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's a good work. That is such an amazing place you have there.
It is. If you had, if you guys haven't been there, as far as going and going through.
Where is your, uh?
Fantastic.
He want to bubble up to talk to us.
Okay, next on our agenda, we move on to business items for discussion and action. First thing we have on our agenda is business impact. Determination that the agenda items or this meeting agenda do or do not impose a direct and significant economic burden on business. Meaning a trade or occupation conducted for profit or directly restrict the formation, operation, or expansion of a business. Counsel.
I'd go ahead and make a, go ahead. I'd go ahead and make the motion that there are no items on the agenda that impose a direct or significant economic burden on business business. For staff recommendation.
Motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number two, administration, public works, street closure request. Request to close One Amica Boulevard from Model T entrance at five oh four East Second Street. From eleven AM to twelve PM for the Bass Parade on Saturday, June tenth, twenty twenty-three. Reaffirming, we had last.
I'd make a motion to accept the street closure, uh, from the Model T entrance. For the Bass Parade on June tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion on the floor, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on our agenda, administration. Public work, street closure, request to close Bod, Bod, Bod Street from Humboldt County Library driveway to Fifth Street. From ten AM to twelve noon for the summer learn, learning program kickoff party. On Wednesday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, and I know Jessica's online. Do you have anything to add to this, Jessica?
Well, we're just looking forward to it. Um, and we hope you grant your request.
Okay, basically same thing we've done in the past, I'm assuming, so. I think it's been very successful and well attended. You guys do a lot of good programs at the library and we appreciate it.
I would make a motion to approve the request from the Humboldt County Library to close Bod Street. From the library driveway to Fifth Street from nine AM to twelve PM on Wednesday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion on the floor, any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Good luck with your event, Jessica.
Good, thank you.
Item number four. Administration, position salary range table proposal. Request to approve the and adopt the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Position and salary range table for city personnel. Alicia.
Uh, one thing to note in the attached table, so this is our, um, employee, the positions as it stands right now. Uh, the police chief has requested an additional position, um, under the police officers, detectives, and SROs. Uh, and so that would increase the number that says seventeen to eighteen persons' positions authorized for that.
Chief, how many reserves do we have to do that?
Four.
Four, okay.
Can our budget accommodate? Um, in the, in the budget for tentative as well as the, the public hearing we'll have shortly. Um, it does include that extra position, so we have budgeted for it.
We discussed that briefly in budget hearing, I believe.
We did, yes.
Oh, it's, so it's just this classification that had seventeen instead of eighteen.
So, I guess we need to make the final decision whether we're going to add that position at this point.
I think it's a much needed position, um, for the department, just knowing how shorthanded they are and how busy they are in the detective division. I would make a motion to approve, approve the budget.
You're approving this position, so you're, so you're approve the schedule as it had proposed.
Wait a second.
This is actually a resolution.
That was the motion. Uh, we have a motion on the floor, any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So we will move on to item.
Six.
Number six. Administration, service contract proposal, request for authorization to enter into a three-year. Contract with AlSCO in uniforms to provide services for weekly changing of the formats at city buildings. Alicia, you want to explain?
Sure, uh, so the city currently uses Vogue lending service for our, for our mat service. Um, AlSCO did provide a proposal, it's a three-year proposal, um, the prices are about thirty-five to forty percent less expensive than Vogue. Um, and so i- it is much less expensive. It's not a huge expense, but it is, uh, some savings for the city if we go with AlSCO.
Are they local based?
Uh, they are, they were originally out of Idaho, but they have, now have an office in Elko, just like Vogue does, yeah.
Are you going to sign up for Vogue or anything?
Our contract with Vogue is, has expired, and so at this time Vogue is all, Vogue has provided a proposal, asked us to renew, AlSCO has provided a proposal, and AlSCO's is, is less expensive. For the same service, or the same service. Yep, they changed the mats here at City Hall and opened up the police department each week.
I would make a motion that we accept the proposal by AlSCO uniforms. For the weekly changing of the formats in the city buildings.
Yeah, motion on the floor, any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We will move on to item number seven. Administration, prevailing wage legislative proposal. Senate Bill two twenty-six proposed in the current session of the Nevada Legislature. Will, if adopted, require that certain exemption, with certain exemptions. The payment of prevailing wage on previous types of projects on public plans performed by private developers. Resulting in increased cost for such projects. And it is proposed, the city submit a letter in opposition to the proposed legislation. One of the big things here is like with the land that we. Transferred to the, the museum. Because it was ours, they would have to pay prevailing wage. Nonprofit or anything like that, so it's really a bad bill. Everybody in the league, I think, is submitting a letter of opposing this, so. We just wanted to give the council's final blessing, so we can send a letter opposing it as a city.
Current law requires that you pay prevailing wages on public works projects, this would broaden that to include any project on public land. So if you had public needs, the private operator, which has done quite often, they would have to pay prevailing wage if they built something or whatever. And our historical data indicates that the prevailing wage is typically thirty-five percent higher than the, the wage. So it adds significant cost.
I would make a motion then that the city submit a letter in opposition to the proposed legislation regarding Senate Bill two twenty-six, the topic of which is prevailing wage.
Have a motion on the floor, any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I thought it was interesting on that, just a comment, that one of your, um. Examples was waiving the fees, even the building fees or the connection fees were kicking in. It's not just if it was on private land, if we waived the fees for something, it would turn around to be prevailing wage, just to build it. It's just, uh.
Like to help proposing?
Yeah, but just, yeah, it's possible.
It's the, it's SEIU, Service Employees International Committee in Las Vegas, which has about fifty thousand members. They got more members than we got, Boise and all the rest of the state, so.
Yeah, so I just think that's a horrible.
That, that would have affected the, uh, early learning center.
Yes.
Because we did waive some fees there, so. It does have a devastating impact on the cost of things, so. Okay, with that, we're at one fifteen, we'll move on to a one fifteen public hearing. Fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget proposal. Fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four tentative budget and amendments to the budget. Request for approval of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four tentative budget as amended and submission of fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four final budget. Alicia?
So the, uh, changes that have been made to the tentative budget. Uh, we received our final workers' compensation rates from pool pact, and so those have been adjusted for all employees. And it was a slight increase, so that slightly increases salaries and benefits in all departments. Uh, we have four public works employees that are on track to receive their CDLs. Um, so salaries have been adjusted to account for the raises those employees will receive upon, upon completion of their CDL requirements. The police department, uh, added eight thousand dollars for ammunition purchases. Uh, as well as thirty-five thousand dollars for a used vehicle for that new position. Um, under contributions, the Chamber of Commerce has requested that the annual contribution be increased from seven thousand to seven thousand five hundred. So a slight increase to contributions. In the street department, twenty-five hundred dollars has been added for a new one hundred gallon weed sprayer. And in the water department, salaries and benefits have been, uh, updated. We, we have two new hires, and so the salaries and benefits were adjusted to match those new, new hires.
So those were temporary, there's a full-time.
Yes.
Full-time pressure.
Yeah. And those were the only changes from the, uh, the tentative budget that was submitted.
Are those two new positions?
Uh, no, they were positions that were temporarily vacant. They were vacant for a couple of weeks, you know, normal, normal hiring process on those.
Alicia, the four employees that are going to get their CDLs, how much does it affect their salary once they go onto the schedule as what the CDL is?
Uh, they get a five thousand dollar raise once they get a CDL, so it's, it's significant for the employee.
So is it a one-time five thousand, does it affect their salary in the year then, or is it not, that's not dependent? I mean, is there also a raise in their salary?
So that is a salary increase, so they carry that forward for, you know, regular COLA increases and everything. It's not a, it's not a bonus, it is a salary increase, yeah.
And, and those four employees, are they getting a front of western Nevada?
Uh, yeah, but two have started the program, the next two, uh, we're planning for them to start in June, so.
If, if you notice the projected income fund balance is at forty-five percent, which is usually a little lower than where we like to be. We usually like to be about sixty percent. But as you know, we always underestimate our revenues and overestimate our expenditures, and so I, I don't think that's a major issue there. Any other questions? It's a public hearing, so we'll call for a public comment on our proposed budget. Anybody have anything they want to add, question? Anybody online have any comments? Not seeing or hearing any, we will move on.
Need a motion?
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four tentative budget and amend, and amendments to the budget as presented.
Motion on the floor, any further questions from the council? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We will move on to item number nine, administration, American Rescue Fund. We plan, American Rescue Plan funds, update proposals for use of American Rescue Plan Act funds. Alicia?
I don't have any.
Anything new there?
No new updates. Uh, the latest report was submitted at the end of April. Um, our, we've expended about fifty-eight percent of our, our vote funds, and so we're on track to, to spend them by the. We have to allocate them by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and have those spent by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Um, and I did include the, uh, the project table in the package.
Public comment?
Any questions? We'll move on to item number ten, administration. Boatpower Memorial Pole New Aquatic Center, proposals, studies, and reports for developing a plan for abandoning the existing boat. Powered Memorial Pole and options for funding and developing a new aquatic center. Alicia, have we heard anything back from our plans?
Uh, we have not received any sort of design updates yet. Uh, NIT requested any available geotechnical information for the site, the preferred site, as well as the secondary site. Um, I was able to locate one geotechnical study from twenty twelve, and there was one boring location near the preferred site and one near the secondary site. Um, NIT does recommend giving some additional geotechnical information. Uh, it has a significant impact on the type of foundation that's selected and that kind of thing. Um, and so it could have an impact on whether the preferred site is chosen or the secondary site, if soil conditions are better at one versus the other. Um, so I will be requesting any proposal from, uh, a geotechnical engineering company. Um, and that'll be brought back to council for review before we move forward with, with any additional geotechnical studies. And that's not included in the, it's not included in, in NIT's contract.
So that's expense outside of that, does it?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have an idea of what it would, um, sound like would be?
I don't expect it to be a significant cost. I mean, I would say less than twenty-five thousand, I, which is still somewhat significant, but compared to the overall project, it, it's, it shouldn't be a huge cost.
And both of the proposed locations are at the Woodbury. They're just different.
Yeah, so the, the preferred is up in the end of the splash pad, and the secondary is, um, kind of just across the roundabout from the Boys and Girls Club, off, right off of Great Basin.
And then are we thinking twenty-five thousand per horse side or total?
No, I, I think total. I mean, I may be way off, but I don't, I, I don't think it will be significant, and I don't think we need like thirty boring samples. I think it'll be fairly minimal.
Do you have anything about community outreach or, have you heard any plans yet?
Not yet.
Any other question?
Well, I guess I have one more on that.
Okay.
Would they continue, that's not holding them back from them moving forward on the plan, their, uh, this process.
Not at this time.
Okay, great.
We have the next item, no further, should we move on to council reports? Okay. We will move on to staff and council. Alicia?
Uh, no new updates on L eight or the Eastside Community Garden project. Uh, BLM expansion project is, is still the same, no updates from them since February. Uh, recreation complex, still looking at ARPA funds for some projects there. Uh, work to clean up the community gardens continuing. Our heavy aircraft apron reconstruction design is, uh, it's getting close to complete. Um, on the general, a, gen- general aviation apron reconstruction, um, the concrete quality, uh, is not great. And Armstrong has been out to inspect that. Um, it is falling along the joints. And, uh, aren't, at this time Armstrong has recommended that he notify Q and D that it's, we're still in that one year warranty period, and it's. It's not going to pass the, the warranty period, so we will keep, uh, working with Q and D on that, and it's kind of looking like that will have to be redone, so. Disappointing on the quality for that, but good that we still, Q and D will have to replace it. On the Hanson Street Water and Sewer Project, uh, notice to proceed has been given to Honeywell Construction. They started ordering materials, um, and they anticipate starting around May thirtieth. Waiting for Run Amica to be over before they make any closures in Hanson Street.
Still at the bottom, water levels agreeable or?
They do still plan on starting near the bottom, near Second Street, and, uh, most likely starting with water first before sewer.
And all the businesses as that project proceeds will be given ample notice, so they could have traffic or parking lots or what have you.
Yeah, in the, um, in the contract, uh, on the drawings, and I believe in the contract as well. Uh, they have to provide businesses with forty-eight hours notification before they close the street.
On the BLM, the expansion, you, you haven't heard anything about leases?
I have not. I, um, I recently saw Donovan Walker, and, uh, I was thinking about reaching out to him locally. Rather than with the, the leasing office, which is in the Midwest somewhere, I think, Colorado maybe. Um, and it might be, might be easier to work locally than, than through that office.
With, uh, Hanson Street was, um, were they able to get to Endot right away, as they were hoping for, or are they still?
Uh, Honeywell is still waiting for a traffic control plan, and so it has not been submitted to Endot yet. But, uh, Endot requires forty-eight hours notice on that as well, so. Guess start date is pending approval of that.
I keep on bouncing around, and Q and D, do we need to notify them, or will Armstrong notify them?
Armstrong will notify them.
Okay. That will be interesting.
Okay, any other questions, Alicia?
Does, on that, um, Q and D thing, does Armstrong, the one that does the inspect, like the formal inspection that says this isn't going to work?
Yeah, they had two inspectors out, uh, last week.
Okay.
When does that want to be?
November.
Oh, okay, so we're still.
Who did this, you know, where they want to be, or was they have some, or?
No, it wasn't, yeah, they, um. One team started with Q and B, and those panels look pretty good, and then toward the end of the project, a new team came in, and those don't look as good.
But it's the whole thing?
Yeah, I think it's still to be determined if the entire hard stand is going to have to be ripped out and redone, or if just specific panels that show. Failures will have to be ridged.
In the meantime, is that being used? I mean, it's usable now.
It is being used, but the, um, so there's a, a sand sealant on it that was not really done correctly either, and so that is coming up. And then the, the concrete is also coming up at the joints, which is a, a fog hazard, but the. It's not good for the planes if it gets sucked into the engine or anything like that, so. Um, I know that Natasha, the FEO, is out there using a leaf blower just to try to make sure that all of the, the debris is blown off each day. And they are using it to access the fuel tanks.
Any other questions? We'll move on to night, item number eight. Ashley?
Um, I'll be abstaining from this agenda item as I am an employee of the United States.
Okay, item number eight. Public auction, city property sale or lease proposal, consideration of possible acceptance of a sealed or oral bid. For the proposed sale of these by public auction of the city-owned hundred and seventy-seven point three-one acres, more or less. Parcel in section sixteen, township thirty-five north, range thirty-seven east. M D V N M in the county of Humboldt, state of Nevada. Identified as Humboldt County Assessor's Parcel Number thirteen dash zero two four two dash zero one. For minimum sell price of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or minimum lease price of eighteen hundred and seventy-five dollars per month. We only got one sealed bid. Uh, the sealed bid was from Lithium Nevada. And recently they're just saying, uh, the same thing that's on our agenda. And they are, for a proposed lease, fifty-seven hundred dollars per month. Or if we are interested in a purchase of nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars. These bids are made in good faith and are made with request notice to authorize company. So it's the only sealed bid we have. So at this time, we need to ask the council if they want to consider purchase proposals or lease proposals, or both. If they elect only consider one of the proposals, then we need to make a motion to reject either the lease or the purchase at this time. So, council, put your thoughts on purchase versus lease.
I would, I would make a motion to reject the outright purchase of the property at hand, hundred and seventy-seven point three-one acres.
Only consider the lease?
And only consider the lease, correct.
We have a motion on the floor, does council have any questions or discussion?
I just want to say that I, I think that's the very best part. Maybe there's a lease, it allows us the opportunity to, um. Watch the performance out at that industrial park as we move forward, so I agree with this, a lease is the very best, in the best interest of the city.
As do I, I verbalized that previously.
I am in agreement as well with that.
Okay.
So I go ahead and second that motion.
If we don't give them seconds, we'll get away with seconds.
We have a, we have a motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Just in case, do we have any names? Okay. So, now that we've done that, before we can accept the, we need to open it up for oral bids. They must be at least five percent over and above what the written bid is. And does anybody have, want to make an oral bid? Not hearing any additional bids. I guess with only one bid, we need a motion.
That's the correct amount.
Five thousand seven hundred dollars per month. That's the correct amount. We need a motion to accept.
I recommend that you tentatively accept it so that we can, uh, work with the prospective lessee to get whatever terms and conditions in the resolution we authorized this. City can put the determined condition they want on the property or on the lessee. I, I recommend that we make the motion to tentatively accept the lease proposal from Lithium Nevada Company. As in, uh, sit down with them, uh, assuming that motion passes, sit down with them and then bring it back for a final determination at the next meeting probably. But, uh, we just continue the cycle of the next meeting. Make the tentative acceptance because we need to hammer out the terms and make sure everyone's engaged.
So tentative, right. I would, uh, make a motion then to tentatively accept the proposal from Lithium Nevada Company to lease the city-owned hundred and seventy-seven point thirty-one acre parcel of property in section sixteen, township thirty-five north, range thirty-seven east, M D B and M in the county of Humboldt, state of Nevada, identified as the Humboldt County Assessors Parcel Number thirteen dash zero-two four-two dash zero-one for the minimum lease price of five thousand seven hundred dollars per month subject to further agreement between the city and the prospective lessee on the terms and conditions of this lease.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. With that, we will move on to council reports. Mike?
Um, slash path, is it, I know there was some leaks and stuff. Uh, where did they all fix?
It's being worked on this week. So we've had, there's been valve issues, uh, yeah, some sort of drainage issue. The Parks Department is aware of it. They're working on it. Yeah.
So they still hope to have it open?
Yeah.
It's actually happened, right?
It, yeah, it is running with some things not working and some drainage issues. But yeah, it is turned off.
And I haven't done, if there's a new piece of equipment, they put on it?
There is the two new, uh, to replace the guns with the plunger things is now just a ball that rotates that also shoots out. Um, I believe one, one is working, one is, has a, a solid valve issue.
I had an RTC meeting and Alicia presented, uh, Hanson Street, Hanson Street project. Although it's going to be really busy, but she did a very good job at that. And I thought that this weekend, the city was really busy. I saw a lot of, law presence in a lot of different places, which is comforting to see. And we didn't have any problems as far as I know. So I appreciate that very much. And that is it.
Teresa?
Uh, W C V A met last week on the seventeenth. Um, uh, East Hall Exterior renovation project, um, continues with the some design, continued design tweaks and engineering phase adjustments. So, um, W C V A just directed them to carry on with a few, uh, changes. We approved that fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget as well. Um, there were grants or facility waivers approved for the twenty twenty-three sober grad party, the Winameca Regional Wa- Raceway, the Denial Community Board and the Boys and Girls Club for their Giving on the Green Golf Tournament next month. Um, W C V A did approve, uh, an additional twelve thousand dollars of funds, um, to be made available for safety upgrades to the bucking chutes out at the event center for rodeo events, particularly there are several coming up. Um, the June meeting will be slightly earlier next month, just due to various folks' schedules. And, uh, Mr. Peterson does still have some concern over labor with what we believe is the honor camp still closing. I'm, no one seems to have a real firm timeline on that, but, um, he, he does have concerns about how that may affect, um, particularly the physical labor, the, the, uh, cleaning of stalls and things like that as they transition from event to event out at the fairgrounds. So, um, yeah, I think that was, uh, W C V A. How are we in terms of temp help, summer help? Like, are we pretty good, pretty covered?
We do have, uh, a few seasonal workers that have started. I know there's one in the street department. We have a, quite a few in the parks and golf. Um, we could still use more, um, but we, we have hired some.
One thing I think we ought to mention is, um, the late spring coming, the weather, the way it has been, some of our parks need a little attention. But we've got people doing CDL training and things like that. So we are a little behind on that. So if anybody needs to comment, we are fully aware of being behind and we're trying to protect that as fast as we can. So.
And the mosquitoes spraying have begun?
Yes, yeah.
Yesterday they were out of the plains. Yes, I saw that. So many comets.
The mosquitoes were looking at planes higher than they actually were.
When you get water, you get mosquitoes. All right, that's all, Mary. Thank you.
Vince?
Um, had a HDA meeting and, um, I think we gotta be very, very happy with Michelle Allen and, and the job that she's doing for HDA. Um, every, every single month, she gives us a, a very detailed, um, report on, on what's happening, um, all of the different angles and different agencies she's working with, all of the, um, different things that she's trying to do. She is, um, very much on point of what she's doing. Um, she has been, um, you know, bogged down pretty good. And, um, Christina has actually volunteered to, to help in any way that she could possibly with Michelle. Um, but it's, it's been a very, um, good working relationship with Michelle and I think she's doing a fine job. And that's the only, uh, meetings that I've had.
Uh, I had a historic resources commission meeting, um,
The project.
And they did the award. Um, Dana has applied for a grant to do the Haunted Bridge Street again, get some funding for that. Not much else new there. Uh, we have another meeting on July fourteenth.
Pam?
I've had a few meetings. Um, first of all, I did go to the main street training. Only got to attend one day, so we have not had our meeting yet. It'll be tomorrow's here what Gene, uh, Hunt learned during his day of training. And one thing that stuck out to me, A, we're not even close to doing what we should be doing. But, uh, to become an accredited organization in our community, we should have a full, we, it's required that we have a full-time director for a population over five thousand, which I thought was a little, little high standard. But anyway, so we'll be discussing all of this, uh, in our meeting tomorrow. I did have a, an, an R C meeting. I actually attended that. And most of you know, they had the hike up to, um, the yurt for ladies night on five twenty. So I believe that went well. And they're coming up with a new set of bylaws to establish a five oh one C three four. Make it a more solid organization, I guess. I attended an FCC meeting, uh, prior to this meeting. And, uh, they are just focusing on educational, uh, stuff to the schools for, ceasing from alcohol and vaping. And of course marijuana, they want to hold some meetings with, uh, parents as well as they knew about the use of marijuana. Uh, they will target that training for, I believe, September, start of school year, August now, I guess. Um, still working on the resource room. Of course, we've been delayed because our, uh, director has had some medical issues in her family. And they did have a successful fundraising event where they raised eighteen hundred dollars during bingo night. That was really good. And that is it.
Thank you, Pam. Kat, do you have anything? Chief?
Yeah, I do have something. Um, with the post-pandemic labor shortage across the nation, wouldn't look, we didn't, we wouldn't be used to that. As all you employers out there know, um, but with that comes human trafficking. There's been an increase in human trafficking throughout the United States. The agency responsible for investigating human trafficking is Homeland Security and Homeland Security Investigations. We do not have the resources or the expertise to, to investigate those types of crimes. Also, this region has been, um, identified as a high drug trafficking area, otherwise known as HEIDA. There's groups out there, uh, that are part of this task force, the HEIDA group. I'm sure you've seen them, Washoe County, feds are all, Lockwood, maybe you see them parked all the time just outside of Lockwood, just waiting. Because we don't have the expertise or the knowledge or the resource to, to, um, to investigate and bring to justice perpetrating. I reached out to Homeland Security Investigations a while back in November, said, I'll, 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 I'll see what we can do. And we've been working on it. And finally, everything's done. We were accepted to join their task force to combat, uh, human trafficking from sex trafficking, child trafficking, labor trafficking, and of course, all world, you know, labor trafficking. So, uh, human trafficking and also HEIDA. Drug stops and drug investigations on the federal level. So we, we worked and we got an officer, Officer Trow was, uh, granted the position. And now we are part of the Homeland Security Investigations Task Force. He got his credentials last week on Tuesday.
Was there training and everything with that?
They, they paid for everything. They paid for, that's why there's no way that we could, we could do that. So they saw the need and after a little bit of convincing and pushing, they came through and said, okay. Because we always get bypassed, right? It's either Reno or Alco. So I said, what about Winameca? And so they've been very well, they're very good to work with. We have a good work relationship now. Uh, there's some stipulations that I did make sure that Officer Trow is our employee, our, our officer. And they know that. And, uh, there, there's already cases in the books and being investigated.
So, um, what's that entail? Does, uh, Trowa go up there to work on the task force? He's here, they come here. If there's a suspicion of trafficking somewhere, an open case, he's assigned to work on?
They have the resources, of course. They have the resources in Reno. Their office is in Reno.
And so they send people down here to help?
Yes. Yeah, they, they know timely goal that unless this case, because most ninety-nine point nine percent of these cases, human trafficking cases, they leave jurisdiction lines, even international lines. That's where H S I comes in and they have jurisdiction through all, um, human trafficking cases, whether it's international or, um, um, wouldn't be nice to, about the United States.
So the only, only possibility would be if he would call and testify in a, in a hearing because of his stop or something for his involvement. He could, he could actually be there for that.
Yes. Yeah, that's a cure. And that's no different than us taking a, a drug case to the DEA and hoping, hoping he will justify it in Reno. So that's a positive for us.
When they do things like that, Homeland Security will pay the travel.
Yes, they pay for anything dealing with that. That's another good thing. If we, we curse overtime working that investigation and he says, okay, I have this investigation, this trafficking, uh, human trafficking or, or drug investigation, please go to HEIDA. And then the DEA will say, yes, we're going to adopt it. Then that case automatically goes federal. Then we get reimbursed for all the overtime where you make travel and all that stuff. That's, that's a good for that case.
We've had officer from Homeland Security here issuing, Officer Ochoa's credentials and badge last week. You know, it's kind of nice to have them come out here and do that. He, he attended it. And then, uh, he, he did make a, a comment that I'm rather proud of and I think you should be proud of. It's a, of, uh, all law enforcement through Northern Nevada. We're the only agency that's fully staffed, whether it's state, federal, local, county, cities. So that's an accomplishment. So thank you for doing that. Okay. Now all I have is on Friday at nine o'clock at the courthouse, they are having the veterans breakfast. Judge Montero is making pancakes and waffles. This weekend's Run Amaka. Uh, Memorial Day ceremony will be held at the cemetery at ten AM and Vince is taking my spot there as I'll be out of town. Nevada Leica Cities is having a retreat in Ely on June eighth, ninth and tenth. Anybody who's interested, I have the agenda for the information here. You need to probably get the reservations and things going right away if you are.
Don't you know that's fast? That's a weekend.
They have, they have pink hons down there. Yes, I think that is. You know, there's always something going on in Winameca. That's all I have. With that, we will ask for any other public comment. Communications, come to the council.
I have a couple of questions. Christine and Kenison. Um, what is the, uh, probably for Kent Maher. What is the Nevada revised statute for the sale lease that you guys are using?
Uh, it's two six eight, like, zero nine five and follow. I don't remember which one. Might be oh seven two. Somebody sees, there's a statute on the auction here with this. So I can, let's see, I can tell you.
And then will the lease details be public before there's, uh, approval of the final lease?
Well, my, my speculation, I don't know this for sure, is that it will be an agenda item. And if it's an agenda item and there's a packet material, it'll be in the packet. So that, that, and that, as you know, that is available to the public, uh, same time it's available to the council.
And my other question is, um, does the airport have the same insurance carrier as the city?
It's the city's insurance.
Yeah, it's a school pack.
What is it?
City, the city's insurance. It's through pool pack.
Pool pack.
Yeah.
And I do have a question because all of the previous agenda items for the property listed it as, um, west of the airport, not on or part of the airport.
Agenda item describes the property, has what it is. It's the hundred and seventy-seven point three-one acre parcel in township and range section there's in. That's, that's the legal description of the property. We didn't give a meat and bone description, but it's a general area.
So is the airport board going to be voting on any of this?
No.
It's not airport property, airport board. Airport board doesn't own any property.
Actually, the, um, the FAA actually cited in their one sixty-three preliminary decision that the proposed development is located on land that is part of the Winameca Municipal Airport.
That's the stair step pieces that are on the building?
No, they're talking about the actual parcel.
No, they're talking about the stair step pieces.
So if it's not part of the airport, the determination, I don't know if anybody else in, on the council, did you guys get a copy of the one sixty-three determination? You did? You did? Okay. Um, because in here, it also says that conditional renewal options in coordination with F A A concurrence, F A A is available to review and comment on a draft lease agreement upon request by the city of Winnemucco. Um, the F A A considers the proposed access roadway to be a non- aeronautical land use. Title forty-nine U S code four seven one five three C requires the F A A to provide notice to the public for not less than thirty days prior to waiving any condition. Therefore, under section one six three B of the act, the F A A has the legal authority to approve or disapprove the proposed non- aeronautical use. A re, a release request from aeronautical use restrictions from the city of Winnemucco in accordance with F A A order five one nine zero, chapter twenty-two for parcel B two is required. So that hasn't been done yet.
That was specifically for the access road that was listed in the request for this one six, one sixty-three review. And that access road is still a proposal. Uh, we don't know where the actual access road may or may not be. At that time, when the request was made, that was where they thought the access road may be.
And all we're dealing with is the one hundred and seventy-seven acres.
Right.
Because they, that access road and the other property is all something that Lithium's working on, I guess.
So, the proposed development is located on land that is part of the Winnemucco Municipal Airport and it has actually a map that comes with it. And it has on it, it says approximate footprint of proposed development. It's on the one hundred and seventy-seven acres.
It's not on the airport, it's.
But the F A A is saying it is.
Well, this is public comment, where this isn't a public, you know, discourse over, you have your opinion for sure, and that's great. Uh, and if you can state any, any public comments you want to state, but this isn't an argument over, you know, what you believe versus.
I was just hoping that the city would be fiscally responsible.
I think the city's very fiscally responsible, actually. Uh, they've, uh, they've handled this thing in a, in a exemplary manner, actually.
So would you say the city's been fiscally responsible in giving away the land to carry on that is part of the federally granted airport land?
I don't think you have all your facts on the carry-on land, so, you know.
You'd be surprised what information I can actually find that's public that, that I don't have to go through the city to get.
Okay. Any other comment?
I guess, um, my name is Jamie Nikatera. Um, I guess I would like to know at what point can we, um, have just open communication with you guys? If we have questions, we can receive answers and try to get some input about the plans and the development and how things are going to, I guess, the progress. Since I live right there, I'd like to know, you know, what does this process look like moving forward? Um, at what point can we a, openly ask you questions without feeling like we're arguing? Because that's not the intent. I feel like since it directly impacts, you know, my home, um, and I'm going to be right there every day, so I have to live with it. So I'd like to know when I can just have an open conversation and for those questions that I have, how I can go about getting answers and what the plans are without it sounding like I'm trying to attack you or it's negative or any of that. I'm just trying to get information. I'm not sure what the plan looks like. Um, I've had a really hard time getting anything as to what the plan is. And so, you know, how can I do that?
Well, first thing I think you understand is, this thing didn't start with a plan. It only started with a request to be able to acquire or lease the property. That's all there was, was just a request to acquire or lease property.
Sure.
And that's all we've dealt with at this point is the request to acquire or lease the, the property. That's it. We don't have a plan. The city doesn't, the city isn't developing this, this is not our development. What we will do, hopefully, is we will enter into a lease agreement with, uh, the Lithium Nevada folks and that lease will have the, the terms and conditions of what we require. But from there on out, it's Lithium Nevada, it's a private development, is what it will be. So it won't be our development, we won't be steering the ship, so to speak. As long as they comply with the terms of the lease, then that's what they, that's what they have to do.
And I, is it correct, Mr. Maher, to say that there is an immense amount of regulation per se that they will go through? But it, it's not our regulation at that point.
They have to comply with every state, federal regulations there is, whatever those are. And I, I don't know what, what those all might be because we don't know exactly how they're going to approach them. They don't have to comply with everything that, that is the law or a regulation that's applicable to their project, you know?
So prior to your accepting this agreement and the, and Lithium meeting all of their requirements, there isn't an opportunity for the community itself to come to you as the leaseholder and say, you know, this is something that we have a concern with, how can we address it or what can we do with it?
Well, I think you, you've made, uh, over the past several weeks, you, you've made, you've made a lot of comments. If you have a specific list of things that you think is, is something that, uh, is, is important and prudent, submit your list to the city manager because she will be part of the discussion with the Lithium folks on the lease, so that's what I would suggest.
I have one more question. Would this lease, uh, be eligible for the airport industrial district job creation incentive policy?
No.
And where would the funds go from the lease?
Into the city airport fund.
Thank you.
No other public comment, anybody online? Not seeing any public comment or hearing any, we'll adjourn our meeting at two o'clock.
So, Mike, you should have Heather's.
What time do we want you?
I know that you're sitting out there.